We're at six thirty. Today is July ninth, six thirty. I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order, and we're gonna start with pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go. Reviewing of June eleventh minutes. Is there any discussion on those, or do we have a motion to approve them?
So moved, decimated.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. No discussion. I'm gonna abstain from voting since I wasn't present. And let's have your vote.
Aye. Oh, we don't need to do roll call now. We just need a regular vote.
All right, community relations.
So we need a vote.
Yeah, we need a vote.
Three oh one.
Just aye.
Yeah, aye.
Three oh one.
Three ayes. All right.
State Representative John Marcy will help the office hours at Town Hall Meeting Room Number One on Tuesday, July sixteenth, and that's from five thirty to six thirty. The real estate and personal property bills are due August first, two thousand twenty-four. If you haven't received the bill, please call the Treasurer's Collector's Office. That number is five oh eight, two four eight, two two zero zero, or just stop by the office. Summer reading has begun at the Charlton Public Library. Our summer reading program runs from June seventeenth through August second. All ages are encouraged to stop by the library and sign up. There are great incentive programs and resources to everyone. This one is important. There is one full member opening on the planning board and one alternate member opening. The planning board is responsible for guiding and reviewing matters related to the physical growth and development being governed by federal and state statutes, local zoning bylaws, subdivision rules and regulations. The board also administers the Standing Roads Act. Anyone interested should submit a talent bank form to mary.davlin@towncharlton.net, and that's no later than July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and those talent bank forms are online. Right, Mary?
Yes.
Just checking, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here for open forum? See anybody moving on to appointment and resignations?
All right, our first appointment is for the position of Cemetery Facilities Laborer. Twelve applications were received for the Cemetery Facilities Laborer position. An interview were offered to eight candidates, which were held by Lynn Dyer, Human Resources Director, and Jim Burlingame, Cemetery Facilities Director. The recommendation too is to appoint Owen Myers as the Cemetery Facilities Laborer with a start date of July eighth, two thousand twenty-four. The board was previously asked to sign his appointment letter prior to tonight's meeting, so all requirements for him to start would be completed prior to his start. So tonight you're asked to reaffirm his appointment.
Do we have a motion?
Yep, so moved, and Mr. Myers, welcome to the show.
Welcome. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Nope.
How do we vote?
Aye.
Aye.
In unanimous.
All right, the next appointment is for Town Council. With the retired Attorney Jim Cosgrove, we've put out a RFP for legal services. Three proposals were received from Butters Brazilian, LLP, KP Law, and the office, the law office of Robert Henigan. After review of the proposals, I would recommend the board appoint the law office of Robert Henigan as Town Council, as he's the most advantageous candidate to be selected as the successor to Attorney Cosgrove. And Attorney Henigan is here tonight if you have any questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, thank you for giving me the opportunity, if you so choose, to serve the town of Auburn, a town of Oxford. I do serve the town of Auburn, excuse me, to turn, serve the town of Charlton, and serve in a place where I enjoy municipal law, and I've been involved in municipal law for over forty years of my career. However, I am grateful for the use of the word, Andrew, to succeed Jim Cosgrove, because you don't replace Jim Cosgrove. Jim Cosgrove has been a friend. I've known Jim for years. He has been a, he's a very, very good lawyer. He is a tough act to follow. I would be pleased to serve as a successor to him, if you so choose. I would look forward to working with you in those capacities. And Jim isn't around. Jim's office is actually one floor above my office, so I have made sure he's not going anywhere. And I would be certainly feel free to call him and, get his expertise on certain areas. But were you so to choose to engage me, I would be very grateful, and I would enjoy the opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, through you?
Yes.
So Mr. Henigan, your CV is very impressive from your, I'm especially impressed with your land use knowledge. That obviously, as Charlton continues to grow over the next X amount of years, that's gonna become even more paramount between zoning interpretations, as well as just overall subdivision growth. So again, very happy to see that, but also seeing, you know, some of the work you've done in the city of Worcester, with some of the more high-profile stuff that happens over there. So again, very impressive. I'm sure your partner in crime, pardon the pun, is also fantastic. It's global. And again, make a motion to appoint the law officer, Robert Henigan.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Nope.
No, I agree with Bill, as far as his credential, fantastic. As far as his hourly rate, is that, that's pretty much run check with what Cosgrove was.
Yep. Probably love to meet Adam at some point, though, too. Probably love to meet Adam at some point, too.
Oh, yeah. I would have brought him. I should have.
Adam, of course.
How do you divide that workup between you and Adam?
Stuff I don't know, I give to Adam.
If we invite you to a meeting and you're busy?
Absent might not be available. My role, I think, in the town of Auburn has been, I don't think Adam's ever attended a meeting. He's certainly familiar with all people involved, but I like to be the person that you see, and I like to be the person at meetings if you want me to.
Yep. Well, you've got a little bit of a learning curve with us. We're not too difficult to get along with, but like everybody else, running into people that are a little difficult to get along with, so that's why we need a...
He's a former city councillor, believe me. He was part of the difficult one.
Oh, it's great to meet you. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Welcome, Mr. Henigan.
Thank you very much.
Hope for your eye, too.
I tricked everybody's hand, but I just wanted to trick your hand.
Oh, absolutely. Good pleasure.
Mary, you wanna make sure he gets...
I saw, when she, when I heard that that was Mary.
Oh, trust me. Keep Mary happy, that's my only advice.
Oh, yeah. Thank you all.
All right, so our next appointment is for the Old Home Day Committee. Attached is a talent bank form from Lonnie Howard, seeking to be appointed to the Old Home Day Committee. Her term expiration date will be June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I just wanted to say thank you to my wife. She's caring for the little kids down at the church.
Oh, thank Herbert.
All right, finally, we have appointments of Traffic Constable, Special Police Officer, and Perdium Dispatcher. Police Chief David is asking the board to appoint the following pending completion of background and onboarding HR paperwork. For Traffic Constables, John Frioli and Robert Campbell. For Special Police Officer, Matthew Gorinian. And for Perdium Dispatcher, Lauren Wilson. I'd recommend the board make the appointments as requested.
Move to approve on all.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thanks, Chief. Because I look at it as ahead of schedule.
Go on to new business?
Yep. All right, next we have an application for special alcoholic beverage license for the Barton Center Diabetes Education, Inc. Attaches an application submitted by the Barton Center for Diabetes Education, Inc. for a special alcoholic beverage license to be used on October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, from six o'clock PM to ten o'clock PM at Camp Jocelyn for the twentieth annual auction fundraiser. The application has been reviewed and approved by the police chief, building commissioner, and fire department. Per the board's policy, if this special alcoholic beverage license is approved, the dates on the license should be for the day before the event, to allow for the alcohol to be delivered, the day of the event, and the day after the event to allow alcohol left over to be picked up. And the recommended motion is included in your package.
Sounds like a fantastic event for a fantastic organization. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the special alcoholic beverage license as submitted by the Barton Center for Diabetes Education, Inc., with the dates on the license to be October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, through October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Aye, second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Not at all.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Next, we have the Asphalt Milling and Removal Bid Award. Bids for the asphalt milling and removal were received and opened on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Four bids were received. DPW Superintendent Nick Peel is recommending the asphalt milling and removal, also being included at two dollars and seventy-four cents a square yard to mass broken stone. I'd recommend the board approve the bid as requested.
Mr. Chairman, one question through you.
Yes.
Andrew, do you remember what it was last year?
This is actually the first time that we've gone out to bid for milling.
That would explain why it's not here.
Yep. So, or at least in quite a while, the, we had some of the, or the paving contractors out to look at Masonic Home Road, and they were saying, well, it would best be suited to do a mill and repay versus anything else, so that's why we decided to go out to bid.
Always on the ball. That being said, make the motion to approve the bid.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right, and the FY twenty-five Fuel Procurement Award. Charlton participated in the FY twenty-five Regional Fuel Procurement Program through CMRPC. Prices were solicited for gas, diesel, heating, oil, and propane with a guaranteed markup price that will be added to a base price. Quotes submitted are as follows. For heating oil, Charlton Oil was the select, was the bidder at fifty cents over the global market for per gallon, which was the same vendor markup as last year. For propane, Charlton Oil as well, forty cents over Selkirk Market per gallon, which was also the same markup as last year. For unleaded gas, Dennis K. Burke, Inc., with a markup per gallon of forty, of forty-nine point four three six cents over the NYMEX rate. Last year, that rate was eighty-five cents over the NYMEX market. And for diesel, also Dennis K. Burke, market per gallon of fifty-one point six two nine cents over the NYMEX rate, winter blend being the same. Last year, the vendor price was eighty-five cents.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we enter the contracts with all four vendors, oh, three vendors in front, sorry. Actually, two vendors.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So Andrew, how many, I mean, these are the same vendors, and that's fine. How many bids do we receive? Are they, are they, or they just know the price?
So the lowest bid that is received is recommended through CMRPC out to the regions that they've, that they've bid on. So they're essentially, they're bidding on multiple towns.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, almost like the data aggregation, like when we think around overall synergies and economies of scale, this is one of the examples.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Do the TAs report?
All right, so Main Street sidewalks. The Main Street sidewalk project has officially kicked off. So AFAMorillo has started with the cross-country connection that's gonna be connecting the outside of Memorial Field between Charlton Elementary School with the library. Work is starting on the phased removal of the existing sidewalks, so they just started the saw cutting, so there'll be some, some construction work going on over the next few weeks, and some, some traffic impacts over that time, so be prepared for that. Maynard Field, the work on Maynard Field ADA Project began on June sixteenth. The site work con, contract is on track to be completed the week of July twenty-second. So far, there's been significant work regrading at the site, and that the old snack shack has already been removed. Once the site work are complete, and the new, a new snack shack will be built on site, so that one is moving along pretty quick. Congratulations to the CERT team on their five thousand dollar CCMPG grant award through MEMA. This is a very valuable grant that they look for each year, and also just want to recognize their work manning the cooling shelter on June nineteenth. Number two, schoolhouse. So the town of Charlton was awarded a fifty thousand dollar project grant for the restoration of the Northside School. This grant is a fifty-fifty match from funds that we had allocated last October for this grant. These grants have a very tight time schedule for the scope of work, so we're gonna be diving right into the grant work, but just want to thank Kara for all of her work in pulling this grant opportunity together, and it's the second, second time that we've gone after this one.
That's true, yeah. Very well done, Kara. Yeah, absolutely.
And just, we're a little less than a month out, so just want to send a reminder that Charlton Takeover Day at Polar Park is Friday, August second, so we hope to see all Charlton's, Charlton residents pack the stadium that night.
Drew, are we doing the employee appreciation?
We still have to coordinate that.
Because that was the same day as the Charlton Day.
We had done it, but this year Charlton Day at Polar Park is on a Friday, so... I don't know if you want to talk about that offline?
Yeah, let's talk about it. I still want to do it, though.
Yep.
All right, we have a public hearing now?
All right. A poll hearing from Masonic Home Road. All right, attached will find a request from National Grid and Verizon, New England, Inc., requesting permission to install one joint-owned pole and removal of two joint-owned poles on Masonic Home Road. Also attaches a notice that was sent to the Butters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the police chief and DPW superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to the Butters, and I'd recommend the board approve the request. Also, if there's anybody here from National Grid or Verizon on the attendees list, please just write note in the comments, I can let you in.
All right, I'm reading the public hearing notice that was sent on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand twenty-four, at six forty-five in Meeting Room One, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass., zero one five zero seven, and the Zoom webinar address is listed. To act on the request from National Grid and Verizon, New England seeking permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. Masonic Home Road, National Grid to install one joint-owned pole and remove two joint-owned poles on Masonic Home Road, beginning at the point approximately five hundred and forty-eight feet east of the center line of the intersection of Masonic Home Road and Trolley Crossing Road. Installing a new P sixteen fifty foot from existing P seventeen, existing P seventeen and existing P sixteen to be removed. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing.
Well done, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on this matter?
Say, Robert Williams from National Grid, if you have any questions.
Mr. Williams, thanks for coming, as always, we appreciate it.
I'm hearing no questions, so I move to close the public hearing.
Yep, motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, with your approval, I would make the motion to approve the request.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thanks, Mr. Williams.
Right on time for six fifty, so... All right, attached will find an update from ACO Emily Sears on the current status of Puka, who has been the subject of a dog hearing on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Puka has been in the care of custody of animal control since the dog was surrendered to the town. ACO Sears is here to provide a further update and answer any questions from the board.
All right, so Puka is still in my care, and maybe to some disbelief, he is a great dog, who was done wrong by his owner that put him in the position where his dog's selectively was shown. He has not shown any aggression towards humans, as he has had a few people handle him to properly care for him with his time with us. Focus and community donations have been providing his food and care. I'm reaching out to all rescuers and all avenues to see if anybody would be willing to take him. I am having a trainer come out and do an email on him for anyone or any rescue who wishes to transfer him into their care. That way, they'll have a professional assessment on him and his behaviors. If Puka is transferred out of Massachusetts, then he does not need to be deemed a dangerous dog, but if he is to be adopted out or transferred in Massachusetts, he will still need to follow the orders that were set forth on him. I know that Puka can't live in a kennel forever, so I'm asking that the board give me until the end of July to find a home for Puka before making the decision to humanely euthanize him.
Mr. Chairman, through you?
Yes.
So, I know it's difficult to take care of a dog like this, but I'm in no rush to carry out any draconian measures. So is that July a, just, you're asking us to put, to wait until then, or to go, can we go even longer than, I suppose that's what I'm getting at?
I would like that.
Yeah.
I'm going on maternity leave in October, so I'm hoping...
By the way, congratulations.
The latest it would be, would be October. This, I don't know if Chief has anything to say about this or anything. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't completely agree.
No.
It's unfortunate, but we've got to come up with a timeframe. We can't go down this path of having, becoming caregiver forever. Your dog is deemed, you saw the videos, you saw the complaints. I don't know if there's any shelter in Massachusetts at once, is there?
I haven't been able to spend as much time on it as I would like.
I thought we were searching nationally now.
We are, we are searching New England.
At some point, we've got to pull the plug on this. And I like dogs, I'm a dog lover, but at some point, there's got to be a resolution.
Can we get this to October first?
I would just say get an update, or next meeting, August thirteenth, and then we can determine, make a determination.
The reason I'm reaching out...
So you're asking till the end of July. Was there a previous date set?
No.
I don't know if you recall, but this was the incident where receiving videos from a...
Oh, no, no, I remember the whole, oh, no, I remember the whole...
Dog owner at the time, it's, it's not that the dog is vicious towards people, but it's vicious towards other animals at this point in time. It's an older dog, it's not a puppy. I don't know that that behavior's gonna change. You certainly couldn't put it in a position where it goes with another dog. Gets into a dog fight, a child's now involved and bitten as a result of it, so at some point, we've got to have a date and say, hey, whether it's October, whether it's the end of July, I don't want to split hairs, but there's got to be a finite time, because I don't think it's any good for the dogs either to be housed like that in a kennel, by the way, in Oxford at this point in time. And I mean, all the issues we've got, until we get some improvements there, so it has outdoor access and things like that.
So that's, so he's at the Oxford kennel now?
Yeah, he was, he was housed there because they have an outside run, and I don't in Charlton. And then at one point, we had the owner trying to get the dog back, so we were hiding him essentially. And then now, he's kind of just stayed there because he has the outside run. And I actually have three other dogs at the kennel right now. And the only reason I was reaching out to other states was because he doesn't have to be deemed dangerous in those states, and, you know, once he's transferred, it's their problem, but that's the reason I was reaching out to any other state.
How does he react now with other dogs?
We don't really put them, any, you know, like with other dogs, he does come face to face with, like, chain link fence, and he hasn't reacted that way, but I, you know, we don't take that chance, obviously. Yeah.
Yeah, Pete, I'm fine waiting until August, and then...
I'm fine either way, if we wanted...
I mean, why don't we continue till August? So definitely not end of July. Let's say we will reconvene, I'll make a motion that we, that we readdress this come August, and then we'll figure out kind of where we stand at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If that works for you all.
Yeah. I don't, just right out of the gate, I don't think waiting until October does anybody any good.
Yeah, me neither. But that would be like the latest, obviously.
We just want to put it on the agenda item for August.
Cool. Thanks, Ellen.
What was it, August thirteenth?
Thirteenth, I think. Yeah, if you're not around, just send an update, we'll figure it out.
For historical perspective, the dog was deemed dangerous and expensive, and then they moved to town, you get lawyers involved, all kinds of issues, and here it is again, repeating the same behavior. So that's why I say at some point, we have to make a decision.
Oh, no, Chief, I, Pete, through you. I, I, I agree with you, I just don't want to use some arbitrary date.
I'm not hotless as you're making out. I'm okay.
I'm not convinced.
Come up with a timeframe.
Yeah, no, I agree. I just don't want to have like an arbitrary date, end of July, that's not necessary, unless, unless it's necessary, and it's not. So that's why I said October first, latest.
If they have him around, it's gonna be hot forever.
So we'll just, we'll just reassess him. Thanks, Ellen. How you feeling, darling?
I feel great.
All right, we didn't have any old business, we don't have any Board of Selectmen policy review. Any other business unknown at time of posting?
Only the chief is heartless.
No, Andrew, we're gonna do the best we can to publicize this, Andrew. Right? We're gonna put it up where we should, by very old the place website, yeah.
I just have a question, the, just housekeeping question. As far as, back when we had that joint meeting, we talked about...
Sorry, Steve, which joint meeting?
Huh?
Which joint meeting?
The joint meeting with the, the, all boards meeting.
Oh, all boards meeting, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We talked about, there was discussion from the, what's the name of the group?
White Paper?
Huh?
White Paper?
No, the name of the group, the Charlton...
Business Alliance?
No, no, no. They, they spoke to us about, what is it, the, the whole group to get together and talks about...
How the town is run.
If they, if they can make the town better and...
The Government Study Committee.
Government Study Committee, correct, jeez, I don't know, I forgot that. And there was discussion about possibly create, making the town clerk's position.
Town clerk, town constable, there was a couple of things in there, yeah.
Yeah, a, an appointed position rather than elected position. And there was a vote taken that night to do a study on that, and I'm just wondering if the, where we are on that study, because if we, if we wait until December or February, and we miss a couple of steps, we're not gonna get there by May.
Pete, through you? Yeah, so I, I remember that meeting, and I don't necessarily know if it was a formal study. I think it was going to be put on the agenda for our own internal discussion, because Pete, remind me, I think there was some concerns, for lack of a better word, around the necessary qualifications, what, what responsibilities would they have, how would they be graded, measured, et cetera. So I think when Pete first got nominated to chair, those were the things that we said that we were going to come forth in the next few months. Does that sound very Pete?
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was, you know, we definitely have to have, put that as an agenda item for discussion.
Yeah, I would, I would, I'd recommend that we start, we start back up with our fall schedule in September, because that should give us enough time to, if we decide to pursue it, to hit the May Town Meetings Ward closure in the early spring.
Andrew, do we have any idea what the steps are that are involved, with the state, any pre-work we need to do, or?
As far as pre-work, I mean, I think it's just a matter of how you structure the position as, as appointed, and then whether or not you need legislative approval. I think that's kind of the only question mark is whether or not you could just do it by town meeting vote, or if you need the legislative approval to...
We need, before or after our vote, the town?
Any legislative approval would be following the town vote, but considering it's elected position, you'll probably also need a ballot question.
Yeah.
So that's why, you know, if you have a ballot in a town meeting, do you also need to have legislative approval? That's kind of the question. Now that we actually, that we have new town council on board, we can leverage his expertise in that.
But we need this group's, this group's approval first before you even move...
Correct, exactly.
What's that?
I said we need this group's approval first before we even move, there's no guarantee that it's gonna pass the selectmen's vote.
Correct, because I think it was three-two last time against, for putting it on in May, with the assumption where we were going to reconsider this fall.
Yeah, okay, so...
So September. And actually, Chair, through you, the other thing I know that we want to discuss, we got a new town council, was the, was the select board language. So just something else for the, for the fall.
Yep. All right, moving on, we have our next regularly scheduled meeting slated for August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
What's your turn? What's your turn?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Nice job, everybody.
Chief, always nice to see you.